Sixty-three Main Street, due to...
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, open forum.
Did I miss... Oh, yeah, okay. Open forum. Joe.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so my note, sixty-three Main Street, has been rescheduled to your May fifteenth meeting. And just wanted to remind everyone that the rescheduled annual town meeting will be on April twenty-seventh, on Saturday, at Westford Academy Field, weather pending, at nine AM. So it'll be a similar check-in process, starting at eight AM, but the meeting is planned to start at nine AM on the field, on April twenty-seventh.
And if there are any updates to that, we encourage people to go to the town's website, the Town Meeting section, and they'll probably post updates there, so.
So if there's anybody here for sixty-three Main Street hearing, you can go home, because it's not happening tonight. Doesn't work like... Yes, Ellen?
I just wanted to mention, is there not a rain date for Sunday, if it rains on the twenty-seventh? I thought I wrote the...
I thought that was the case.
That is true.
Okay, thank you.
With subsequent rain dates of May fourth and fifth.
Okay. I had those two.
Hope for sunshine.
Okay, how about some meeting minutes of March twentieth? Anybody have any additions, deletions?
No.
Maybe it's major, maybe it's minor, but I believe it up in the one oh-two, one oh-three area.
Mm-hmm.
There was comment from the attorney that there'd been some action by the planning board in years past.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe I specifically asked for names and dates and documentation.
You did.
And it's not reflected in these minutes. And I believe to... With a provisor that that information was brought forward at the continued...
Mm-hmm.
Meeting or the continued action.
So can we add that in, Joe?
Sure.
Requested by Mr. Earl. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Just, we have some members absent before you take a vote on minutes.
Yes.
Were you planning to seat anyone?
So David, we're gonna seat you, and Jeff, we're gonna seat you.
Thank you, for the entirety of the meeting?
All night.
Thank you.
Only five of us. Keep it simple. So can we approve these minutes with the addition of David's request?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now we can go to the agenda. Second item, which is our first item, is gonna be Zero Muriel Drive. And that was a continuation from last month. And I see we have Attorney Gould with us.
Good evening. And this is Eric...
Jacobson.
Jacobson, who is representing the applicant who's here last month, Jim Warren. I think I've lost all of my other... It just got me.
Okay.
Since the last meeting, we've done a little more research and homework to bring to the attention of the Board those things that were commented on. And I sent in a narrative concerning uniqueness of the property, the hardship, or the claimed hardship, and how a decision in favor of the applicant would not be more detrimental or substantially derogated from the zoning bylaw. Do you have a copy of that?
No, I don't think so.
Narrative, could I submit it?
No. It was on...
We have a comment on that.
We don't... I think we have one on one. So we have a lengthy...
I don't have a print of it.
Oh, it was emailed to us?
Yeah. I saw it in email, but I don't know.
It was emailed. It was emailed.
Yeah.
When was it emailed?
After the close of business on Friday.
So we didn't get it till Tuesday?
Correct.
Okay. So, here's the skinny. We have a policy that if we don't get the information by Friday, by four-four, before our packets go out, then we don't feel that... Some of us don't have the time to read these. Now, because it was a holiday, on Monday, Town Hall was closed, so we didn't get anything until Tuesday.
I do understand.
I personally didn't get a chance to look at it. Mr. Earl has objection to the fact that it came in so late. We'll accept it, but it doesn't mean we're gonna get to look at it. So I think that... And so I guess, in that packet also, you had stated a lot of case law. I saw all these things, case law, case law, case law. Well, none of us are lawyers, and none of us have access to case law. So I think the best course of action for us is to move this to the next month, have Town Council review some of your case laws, so that we can understand what you're referring to, because to us, it's just names and numbers. And I will caution you again, if the information does not get here... On what day, Joe?
So the Friday before your next meeting. We'll pull it up now for you.
It's the fifteenth, so it'll be...
So it's the tenth, this Friday.
Tenth. What time do the packets go out?
They will go out by the end of the day. We usually like to get it out earlier for you, to give you as much time as we can.
I just wanna comment that Mr. Genowitz was very kind in reminding me and tickling me on it, and so no fault of his, in fact, he tried to push it earlier.
Yep, no, I... We're not trying to blame anybody, it's just that in order for us to make an informed decision, we have to have all the information and the time and matter in front of us, so we can review it. Contrary to what everybody thinks, these high-paying jobs that we have up here, we don't always have the time...
I get it.
...to look at these. So does the Board have any other questions, concerns, or comments before we move this to next month?
Do we do that without any comment from anybody? Or do we circumvent that piece?
No.
I mean, there's a certain number of people have apparently shown up for this.
Yep.
Unfortunately, we expect some input from... So I don't know what the best plan of action is, whether we just go forward without that document even being considered, or do we postpone everything and have everybody come back next month?
Dave?
If availability is...
Well, without...
We have different... By the way, you have different attendees tonight, so if we continue it, then it will be different members, perhaps.
Without really getting into it, I have scanned it. I think it falls far short of at least the request I made. And if the applicant is gonna rely on something that happened, I think nineteen-seventy-seven, with unnamed members of a certain Board with no documentation, that's just out of the gate, that's just not responsive and inadequate to any serious discussion of this request. And I've been a member of this Board, as you know, for some time, and I have seen us decline not similar, but well, they're similar, not same as this, and with significantly more detail than has been provided so far.
Jay?
I agree with you in that if we just go forward tonight, I think we're gonna need to have some type of discussion with Town Council, so we're gonna have to continue it anyway. So to have that information before us, before we actually have some discussion on it, I think would be helpful. So I think it'd be helpful maybe to continue it next month. Is this something that Town Councils reviews? Is this a document that we need to have reviewed by Town Council, or is it something we could use our own judgment on?
So the Board has some options. I've heard one Board member state that there was a lot of legal terms and things called out, and citing specific case law, of which you may have zero knowledge of. Maybe it's, you could ask Council to just provide a review of the various application materials. I know there's been some questions raised about what principles do or don't apply, and maybe we can just get a boiled-down version from Council on what this may or may not mean relative to this specific petition.
Go ahead.
So we could reach out to Council. We could ask them, we could share the information, see if they can provide any helpful information, and if they feel any of the cited case law is relevant, they could provide perhaps a version for you folks that we normal people can understand.
Okay. So I know at the last meeting, someone came up and had the tax record printed out, and what you saw from nineteen-twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-three was the lot was assessed as an unbuildable lot. And so I had staff ask the assessor what changed. And what changed was is that the lot was listed for sale. The assessor assumed that it was a buildable lot, and automatically just made it that way, and upped the assessment. So there was no rhyme or reason or anything to it, other than the town had an opportunity to make some more tax dollars, and that's what they did. And that's kind of the bat issue. There was one other thing that was brought up. I forget what it was.
Does that make it a buildable lot now?
No, it does not. It does not. Oh, so it was also a septic permit issued.
If someone's gonna... We should probably get name and address for the record, if someone's asking questions.
Yep. So there was also a septic permit issued. And once again, the Board of Health gets something put in front of them, they look at their criterion, they could issue a two-bedroom septic permit, and not realize that the lot had not been deemed buildable by this Board, or the town, or anybody else. They did their job, simple as that. Does that make it a buildable lot? No, it does not. So there's been a lot of stuff going on with this lot that, as I say, there's a process. And the process hasn't been fulfilled very well. You gotta start with A and go to Z. You don't start at M and go to Z. So that's part of the problem with this whole scenario. So I just feel that, and I think the rest of the Board is with me on this, that we need to have some more conclusive evidence from someone who can read case law better than us. You know, and then there's the question of the merger law, and the merger act. And I think we need to have that explained to us from our Council, and see how that plays into this. So there's another thing that we have to look at. So going forward, I think the smart thing to do for us as a Board, and for your client, is to have Council review it, meet next month, and hopefully we have some better answers. Go ahead.
Mr. Givens, I just wanted to speak to Mr. Earl's comment about the plan. The recorded plan is in the materials and is at the Registry of Deeds. I did try to do a search for that planning board meeting, and try to determine who... The names of who signed it, who was on the planning board in nineteen-seventy-seven is on the plan. But, correct me if I'm wrong, I asked for a way to do the search, and Mr. Morris, that was kind enough to say he's tried to find the minutes of that meeting, and they don't seem to reference this.
I did go in to the Town Clerks, into the vault. I did go through the old minutes. I was unable to locate that specific set of minutes from that, around that meeting date, so.
So I just wanted to comment for Mr. Earl, that I did try to find it.
My only comment would be, no minutes, no documentation, no discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the doc... Excuse me, but the... Through the chair. The documentation is their signature on the plan. That is a mandatory document that was submitted.
Expressing...
Mm-hmm. So, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, what I didn't know is there were folks, apparently, who did come out tonight. All I... We've gotten direction that you would like us to seek input from Council. I don't know, is there any other information? I've heard looking about merger principle, the information provided from their Council, how does that play in the case law? You know, guidance on that? Is there anything else that you would like input from Council about? Is there anyone else here that might have something that could change that if they were allowed to speak?
That's what we're gonna do next thing. So I'm opening this up to the audience. Is there someone in the audience who would like to speak to this, for, against, or comment, or have something that we haven't talked about? If you do, please come up to the microphone, give us your name, and speak. Jeez, last meeting, you guys were very chatty.
James Sullivan, Zero Lawson Road. I think a lot of the folks last meeting said what I'm thinking. I would be opposed to this, getting the variance as well, and I just wanted that to be noted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Phil McQuire, eleven Florizy Street, which backs right onto this property. I spoke last time in opposition to this, and I'm still opposed to it. Like I said, I'm retired, I'm home all the time, I look out and I see nice woods and peace and quiet, and I really don't wanna see a house there. But just saying, I'm still opposed to it. Thank you.
You.
Mike Gross, fifty Lawson Road, so I was not here last meeting. I did get the opportunity to watch it online, I appreciate everybody's input. I'm also in agreement with the rest of my neighbors, completely against this, from what I saw in the last meeting, and then what Council brought today. I didn't see anything different. So I appreciate the fact that you guys are, you know, operating the way you are, completely against it, doesn't make any sense. Not a buildable lot. Thanks.
You.
Lawrence Ladue, one EZ Street. I spoke at the last meeting, and I talked about, I had heard the Counselor here talk about hardship. There is hardship there. I, again, the Board, I appreciate all the work you do, the volunteer work. And you know how hard it is. And if... And I'm glad that you're gonna seek legal counsel on this to review the material, because my fear is, is it will have a huge snowball, that if the hardship goes here for an undersized lot to put a home in, everybody in the town of Westford that has that piece of property next to their house will be coming to the Board saying, "I would like to put something there." And when you say no, they'll seek legal counsel to say, "I'm gonna sue you because you allowed this to happen." So that's my concern. And again, you're gonna seek legal counsel review of this, so that is a good thing. Hopefully, after all this review, this can come to a closure. Thank you.
So let me rest assured, give you some input as to your comment about other lots in town. We take each incidence on a case-by-case basis. So if we vote in favor or against this, it's not gonna affect anything the next time around that we do something.
No precedent.
Yep. There's no precedence being set.
Phil McQuire, again.
At the last meeting, somebody stated that there was not a legal survey done on this property. And I walk by it all the time, and I still don't see anything that looks like official stakes in the ground, or the kind of thing that you would expect to see a surveyor put in. I'm just curious, has there been an official survey done?
There was a surveyor there.
So there's stakes and stuff?
He's taking comments.
I'm just curious, because it doesn't look like anything there.
So did you submit a certified plot plan to us?
There's a survey that has been submitted in these plans of what they're building, to this Board, the Board of Health, necessary for the well permit and before the building inspectors. So there has been a survey.
Okay. Anybody else?
Has there been a survey done?
There has been a survey done.
I would comment that just maybe sometimes we need a little bit of a step-back dope slap, because in the staff comments, the staff comments from the previous meeting, number five says, and it suggests that we do what we're supposed to do. In reviewing the variance criteria, Staff recommends that the Board make specific findings as to whether the applicant has or has not addressed all of variance criteria as part of this review, particularly the first criterion. So I think if you look at the criteria, and we talk about topography, the size of the lot, that's one thing. Number three, without substantial detriment to the public good, and some significant public comment has come here today. So I just think sometimes we go forward without backing up. Sometimes we avoid that criteria before we get too deep into things. But I'm not so sure that with all of this, we meet the variance criteria. I'm not convinced we are, so.
With due respect through to the Chair, to you, and Mr. Kuzinik, the applicant has created a map of the lots in the area showing that they are consistent in size, many of them smaller with much larger houses on them. And so when you talk about detriment of the public good, I think that criteria is at least addressed. If this Board determines it's not met, that's your prerogative, but it is addressed. But I don't think you get to that criteria without getting to the arguments of uniqueness of the lot and hardship. And if you recall, the argument for uniqueness is that this lot comes about from a plan that was endorsed after the nineteen-seventy-six cutoff that the statute speaks to. And that's why I'm troubled by the mixed messages that this law gives, and that the town has given to the lot owner and everyone along the way. I'm not saying it's the town's fault, I'm saying that there was a compilation of encouragement to go forward and build on this lot that didn't get stopped by his lawyers, by his engineers, by the date on the plan. And those are the things I'm going to address as unique after Town Council looks at my narrative and sees if that has any merit to it. Then I think we get to detrimental questions about size and consistency in size with the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think, you know, the relationship with the neighborhood, I mean, this, things have changed. Back in the seventies, these were camps on Nab Lake. I mean, a lot of these were cottages that had been rebuilt, torn down and rebuilt over... Rebuilt totally.
Correct.
So, you know, what was existing in nineteen-seventy-six or seven versus two thousand and twenty-four, the types of construction and homes that have been in the area, I'm not... I think it's a little bit of an apples and oranges type of thing, Sherry. Based on... I know, those lots are all the same size. This one sticks out.
I hear you, but I would just like to add, for the benefit of the neighbors who are objecting to this, this will not stay an empty-wooded lot. If this isn't allowed, and it may not be, Mr. Blazer's only option is to sell as a single lot, and he's on a small, unimproved camp, it hasn't been updated for many, many decades, I think whoever buys it will put a five- or a six-thousand-square-foot home there and take up the two lots.
Two lots.
So, I mean, if you go around the neighborhood, that's what's happening all around the neighborhood.
Is it correct that the other lots... The other lots are residential B, right? This is a residential A section. That's somewhat of a difference.
We're starting to evolve where we said we wouldn't go. If the criteria, if the documentation has been met, I think we move on to continue.
Yep. Yes, sir.
If someone does, if the owner sells the whole lot, and someone does tear down the house and put an appropriate sized house between this lot here and the present lot that he lives on, then that meets all the criteria, there's no doubt about it. Frontage on both sides would be great. So when she brings this up, it would be appropriate if the house was sold with both parcels of property, and there's a piece of property across the street with a little beach on it. But if it was sold and a house was built there, according to coming here before, it would be appropriate. And maybe it would be larger than what is there right now. But a house built on both sides of the lot we're talking about here, and the house lot right now, would be totally appropriate. And so I don't see where there's a problem here, where she's talking about this, that someone will do this. I think if someone does that, given what homes are going for, and what people are doing, it's going to be the same as the other houses since the eighties, the nineties, and it will be appropriate. That's it. That's all there is to it. But she's right, someone will buy the whole lot and build, but at this point, he'll be within, they will be, when they're legal, coming forward, asking for permission to build on it, because they have enough, they have enough space, and they have frontage, and they meet all the criteria, and so there's not looking for variances. That's all, thank you.
All right. Heard from everybody in the audience, I think what we'll do is get a motion to continue this to the next month's meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just for the record, that should be May fifteenth, correct?
May fifteenth, yep. So before you leave, you understand everything that we're looking for? You understand?
Yes, I do.
The timeframe?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Didn't need me to sign an extension yet? I don't think we're...
We probably do need an extension, don't we?
We would appreciate that.
Don't need to do an email tomorrow?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Littleton Road, Unit Four? Okay, can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tell us who you are and what you're doing.
Good afternoon, my name is Kelly Silva. I am a massage therapist, and I own All Bath Massage at two-eighty-eight Littleton Road, and I'm here today for an after-the-fact variance for a massage establishment.
Okay. There seems to have been a little bit of ambiguity and confusion in the mass law, and the town law, and what you need and what you don't need. I certainly don't have any questions in my mind. You have your licenses from the State?
Yes, we've been licensed for the fourteen years we've been in business.
Okay.
Yep, we have an establishment, we have a location license, and each of my seven employees are also individually licensed, as myself is.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions?
It's just a relocation.
Yeah.
We've been at this location ten years this coming August.
Anybody? We... I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I don't believe we have any comments, any complaints, anything in all that time.
Anybody in the audience have anything to say in favor or against? Now I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are looking for a variance of the Westford zoning bylaws for an after the fact approval of massage establishment and any other permit relief that may be required under Westford zoning bylaw. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
David?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative. So you're all set. They have 14 days to write a decision. There is a 21 day appeal period. You're already up and running, so it's not like you're building something and they could make you tear it down, so.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome. Next order of business, 7 Kings Pine Road. Before we begin, I would like to mention the fact that I am a neighbor of the Morgan Sterns. I am not within the red circles of being a director butter, but I do live in that neighborhood. And I think that I can make a fair and equitable decision on their behalf. And its counsel and the applicant are all okay with that?
No objection, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm passing out a plan. It's the exact same plan that you have behind you. It's just I colored some of the lines in on the AutoCAD just so you could see them a little bit more clearly. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from Farrell Robbins. Also with me tonight is Jeffrey Morganstern. As Mr. Chair has stated, this is for 7 Kings Pine Road. We're here tonight seeking a special permit pursuant to Section 3.6.6 of the Westford zoning bylaws. The lot is located at the very end of Kings Pine Road. I know you can't see on this plan, but we're surrounded by residential properties and also right at the end of the cul-de-sac is land owned by the town of Westford. The lot is undersized. It's 39,468 square feet. The lot clearly also doesn't meet front yard setbacks. Right now, the front corner of that property is 4.3 feet from the edge of the roadway layout. Now, when I say roadway layout, that's not where the pavement is. We actually had my Zabrem locate the pavement, so you can see the pavement is actually shown inside of the roadway layout. That's the dashed line. See, the existing dwelling is actually about 40 feet away from the edge of pavement inside of that circle. It's not uncommon, you know, now you'd go to the planning board and you'd get a waiver of the actual construction of this roadway. The circle wouldn't look like this anymore. You probably wouldn't have grass in the middle, but this is not uncommon to waive the actual construction of the bulb. What we're seeking is to go 1.1 feet to the roadway layout. 1.1 feet is actually just that small bump out right there. And as you can see, the steps are already in that location. If you go up a little bit more, and I've highlighted them in the dark green in the plans that I've handed out to you, those are the steps. So the steps are actually already located in that setback area, point three, but steps aren't considered part of the structure for setback purposes. So that's not, that's why it's noted as the 4.3 and not the point three. Just a little background about the Morganstern family. They've been here for 35 years. They've raised their family in this lovely ranch built in the 1960s, but they've decided they'd like to stay in the town of Westford and age in place. I'm not sure if that's a nice term or not. We had a debate about it at the office. But they would like to stay here and age in place. In order to do that, as you can imagine, you've seen the existing layout. These bedrooms are small. There's no real accessible bathroom. So the way to do that, the easiest way to do that in the structure, is to actually turn the one car garage today into the master bedroom. There'll be a small master bedroom, and then behind the master bedroom is the bathroom. They've tried to reconfigure this 9,000 ways, and it's really not a way to have a bathroom with the bedroom in the front without that small bump out. We're talking about three feet. This is the only area that needs relief from this board. The area to the back that is going to be sunroom meets the rear, the rear yard setbacks. The garage is 27 feet from Kings Pine Road, so that also doesn't need relief. So really, the only relief we need is for that small bump out coming to the street. Now, I think it's much clearer, clearer on the little arts and crafts that I did, that I handed out to the board, but you can see that we have issues with the wetlands here. A portion of that house is actually within the 55 to zero setback to the wetlands. That's everything on the red line. The blue line is actually everything within the 55 foot to the 100 foot setbacks to the wetland. I know that doesn't matter much to this board, the wetland setbacks, but really it does limit our construction area on the site to be really in that corner. We certainly can't go to the other side, and we can't go to any other portion of the house towards the front. It would be closer to the layout of that roadway. So really, we're in the only location that makes practical sense to do any construction. And really, any construction that I do to this small ranch, I'm going to have to come to this board for relief because there's practically nothing I can do with this ranch that wouldn't require me to come here for a special permit, anything on the front side of that structure. The proposed addition will have zero impact to the neighborhood. We have no impact utilities, we'll have zero impact traffic, we'll have zero impact infrastructure. I did have my client go knock on every single abutter's door. You can see that you have in your packet an acknowledgement from all of the abutters that they have no issues and no concerns whatsoever with this being approved. We did receive staff comments. Thank you for those. They incorporated some of the Board of Health comments. We have absolutely no concerns with Board of Health comments whatsoever. We understand the issues with the septic system, and if approved, we would agree to those as conditions of approval. We also received DBW comments, which are also reflected in the staff comments. We have no concerns modifying the driveway to be in conformance with the subdivision regulations. Really, we were trying to expand the driveway so we didn't have to have any sort of turnaround, but we understand DBW's concern, so we can address that. If that is in fact a shade tree, obviously, we would have to go through the proper permitting for that, so we would make sure that if that tree is a shade tree, that we follow all rules and regulations related to the shade tree. His final comment was regarding snow removal, and this is something about the future, really. If you look at the pavement layout here, the pavement actually goes into 8 Kings Pine, which is across the other side of the cul-de-sac. But this cul-de-sac is at least 150 feet wide. So if we were going to need to, by we, I mean the inhabitants of the town of Westford, reconstruct Kings Pine Road because this is an accepted public way, obviously, we would have to be within the cul-de-sac, but there's plenty of area to build roadway here that would get to the rear of these structures with no problem. I know he thought that the new bump out would be within areas that could be used as snow storage or have an impact to snow storage, but it doesn't have any impact to snow storage where we are today. As I said, the steps are already within this setback area, and as a matter of fact, as part of this application, we're actually moving our driveway further back to where it's located today. So you can see, we're actually increasing the area in front of the bulb where we're going to have nothing, which could also be used for increased snow storage if increased snow storage was needed. So I appreciate his concern as snow storage. We look at that all the time when we do new construction or revised construction, but in this instance, I think there's plenty of snow storage. So again, what we're here for tonight is just a special permit for an increase to a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. Really, what the board needs to approve is that small bump out to the front of the structure, which will actually accommodate the master bedroom. It really will have zero impact whatsoever and will still be well 38 feet from edge of pavement, pavement, excuse me, in Kings Pine Road. With that, I will turn over to the board, if the board has any questions.
So let me start and say that at the time these houses were built, front yard setback was met because it was only 35 feet. Zoning in that area has changed from the 60s. I know this because when I wanted to add on to my house, I had to do the same thing, and that's what happened. I'm not concerned about snow storage. You know, we've survived the blizzard of 78, the blizzard of 2015. That space in the middle, that grass area is about 55 feet across. It's huge.
It's huge.
Huge. And I'm down there all the time because I used to plow the driveway across the street to the, from this house, and there's never been a time when you couldn't get around that cul-de-sac. And you're right, that cul-de-sac is probably one of the biggest ones I've ever seen in Westford.
It's big.
So I have no concerns about that. And I think as long as that you, that bump out doesn't protrude into the right of way, which it doesn't, I think I have no problem with it at all. Any other board members want to comment?
I agree. Yeah, it slips like plenty of space there.
Pretty straightforward. I mean, it's closer than what the stairs have, so.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor or against this proposal? Seeing none? And I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there any order of conditions? I don't think there's any that I can think of.
No, I don't have any. Anything on that?
All right. So you going to say something, Jeff?
You sound like you had a motion and a second.
I second.
Yeah, but did you take a vote?
All those in favor? I did now.
I didn't remember a vote happening.
So as Attorney Robbins mentioned, we're looking for a special permit pursuant to Section 3.6.6 for the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling resulting in a front yard setback of 1.1 feet, whereas 4.3 is existing and 50 feet is required as of today. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
David?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative.
Thank you very much.
You're all set?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself.
Yep. So Mr. Valcourt's recusing himself on 78 Boston Road. So this is, do we need to open a public hearing for this or?
No, this is merely a general business item, it's not a public hearing. This is regarding a decision and past conditions of approval. And I think the applicant or on behalf of the applicant, they're looking to ask the board, they want to make a change. They're asking the board to find that the change is not significant and to see if you will make that change administratively, and then also make some findings that the various conditions of approval are satisfied with respect to the current proposal before filing. So.
Attorney Robbins, you're up again.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Again, Melissa Robbins, I'm here tonight for 78 Boston Road. Also with me is Ellen Hardy from Drew Farmhouse, Inc., and I think she would like to say something quickly before I jump into it.
Thank you.
Yes.
So just to explain how we got here 11 months after we were before you the first time, and we asked for permission to renovate the farmhouse and also the barn for nine bedrooms, and that number came 100% from the limitations of the septic system that was on the property. When we went to the closing in November and had a title flat done by the previous owners, we found that there are two septic systems on the property. And no one had known that the one for the barn that was put in the 1980 was still in fact operative, and that's the one that has been used for the barn since it was built. That meant that the partnership that we've had, the honor of creating with Habitat for Humanity and representatives from Habitat here tonight, had the chance to make the two homes in the barn three bedroom rather than one bedroom and two bedroom. And that truly is the demographic that Habitat for Humanity is aiming to serve. And so they are able to take the barn septic system, and you can see it's off to the south of the, of the farmhouse, toward 495, and enlarge that so that the barn will, Habitat will have its complete separate septic system and the existing septic system behind the building put in in 94 will serve the five apartments in the farmhouse. It's really an elegant solution. And when we spoke with Habitat, I said, this is simply a matter of going to the Board of Health. It's a Board of Health decision as to how many bedrooms are on the septic system, not realizing that your decision in May of 2023 had said that it could be only be nine. So it was part of your decision. So we come before you tonight to ask you to reconsider this because there is new information, i.e. the new septic system, and because of what works best for Habitat in terms of the property. So I just want to give you that background and now I will turn it over to the one who is here.
Ellen stole a lot of my thunder here. So Ellen Hardy is here today. Cheryl Major is also here. I think she's very friendly. And then Shayla Carlisle, the executive director of Habitat for Humanity. She's brand new, just got here, so welcome Shayla, is also here with us this evening. I just want to say, I know it's not the board's regular procedure to approve projects, not in my 20 years of doing this, prior to having a plan, and that was done as a courtesy, and we're still appreciating that because we had to go through a procedure in order to get our CPA funds, in order to go to the planning board, in order to get the closing. And that was because, in part, because this board allowed us to move forward without having these final plans. So tonight, this actually is twofold. One is you get to see these plans for Habitat. I think they're really cute, two identical units, one above each other. They're both now three bedrooms. And I can say also, this is the first time I've ever found a surprise septic system in my 20 years of practice. But I think the great news is that it's not for anything bad. This will actually serve exclusively Habitat for Humanity, which is wonderful. It's typical for Habitat for Humanity to create family units. It's not typical for Habitat for Humanity to create single bedroom units. And I'm going to let Shayla just speak a little bit on behalf of Habitat for Humanity, but I just would like to echo what Ellen said to your, the zoning board's decision is that this has zero impact whatsoever as to your conditions, except for the limitation in the number of bedrooms. And that limitation was only there because that was the limitation of our septic system. So had we known that we had a surprise septic system at the time, we would have asked for as many bedrooms as we could possibly get because then our two units could be two, three bedroom units, and then we'd be able to get affordable families into the town of Westford, which is desperately needed in this area. So with that, I'm going to just ask Shayla just to speak for a moment if the board would allow.
Shayla, please come up to the microphone, give us your name.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
My name is Shayla Carlisle. I, as, as you said, I'm brand new to this affiliate, but I have four years' experience working with a different Habitat for Humanity. I don't know how many folks are familiar with Habitat for Humanity here. It's a very well-known name, but a lot of people don't really know what it is we do. We do a lot of different things, but building homes, rehabbing homes, that's really the heart and soul of what we do. We do critical home repairs as well. And I have to say, I think aging in place is a really lovely thing to say because it's so needed in our community, so we do critical home repairs. But as I said, the heart and soul is building homes and rehabbing homes, and it's all surrounding the concept of partner building. So we really partner with the families that we work with. They have to put in sweat equity hours and work on the units. They have to understand what it means to build a home, to purchase a home from us. They have to understand their escrow accounts. We make sure that we really prepare them to become homeowners. And it's a wonderful opportunity for them to wealth build for future generations for their family. And so I think the concept of partner building also extends to the amazing communities that we work with, and so we're just very appreciative to Westford for this opportunity. And there are a lot of families out there in all shapes and sizes, but it is true that the majority of families that apply would be looking for a three bedroom unit. So thank you very much for your time.
Before you run off, you talked about, you just made a comment about wealth building. So one of the things that this board and this town likes to look towards is when you get an affordable unit, we want to keep it in perpetuity. So is that the plan of Habitat for this?
I believe, I'm brand new to this project, but I believe that it is.
Yes, and I can say, Mr. Chair, as I'm also legal counsel for Habitat for Humanity of Greater Loos, I think it's a permanent position now. Yes, our goal after this would to actually go through a lottery so that we could comply with EO HLC requirements to get these units counted on the town of Westford's inventory, regardless of the fact if we can count them on the inventory or not. We will be going through EO HLC, which was DHCD, they just made it much harder to say, and making sure that these will be deed restricted in perpetuity. It's also what we did on Ellen's units for the workplace housing. EO HLC has a program for that as well. So now these also have a regulatory agreement on it so that the town can be assured that these going forward will be workplace housing and then, excuse me, workforce housing as well as an affordable housing component for Habitat. Two separate regulatory agreements with the same exact purpose.
And that was a commitment that the Drew Farmhouse made in the negotiations that we had with the Board of Selectmen following the special term we had with Cobra Scott. It took five months to do that, but we signed those documents in January. The whole reason that the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. was established was to have every living unit at 78 Boston Road in, to be affordable, either as a Habitat home or as a workforce affordable apartment, and that will be forever. And we signed documents to that extent with the Board of Selectmen of Westford. I'm sorry, the select board, and we will never forgive that.
Is there going to be a Westford preference in finding people to buy these units?
Yes.
That is typical.
Everybody comes here and tells us that, and they turn off this from all the places in the world and not from Westford.
We signed that document as well, Scott. That was part of it, and I would not have signed it as president of Drew Farm because it's why we established it. We want Westford. We want Westford people to be able to stay in Westford. So it's our whole raison d'etre.
That is very...
And it's written down in a very lengthy document also signed by the select board.
That is very typical of the Habitat model too, is trying to maintain where families can live in their communities.
So does the board have any other questions or comments?
No.
No. See how quick they said no? So I guess what we have to determine is if this is gonna be considered a minor modification to the original agreement.
Yeah.
Yes. Everybody shaking their head, so I guess that's a yes.
Yes.
Now, everybody's happy with three bedrooms?
Per unit.
Per unit, yeah, per unit. Okay?
An existing septic is, mine has is, or is it?
Which half?
For the barn. The new, the septic system that goes with the barn, has that been?
You said it had to be made bigger, didn't you, Ellen?
Yeah, it's been, the design was just up on the screen, Jim. It's been designed, it has been submitted to the Board of Health, and they've given their...
That's all been approved already?
Okay. Okay, so what do you need from us? A vote?
We would love a vote for you to find that the change requested is not substantial, to approve the change and to find that the requirement for providing the final plans is hereby satisfied for the two Habitat units.
Roll call.
Can we get a? A motion? Motion to that effect?
Joe's got it recorded, I think.
Dave?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Am I missing anything here? General business, Boston, uh, no, okay.
What's this discussion about?
Okay, so the next item that we're gonna talk about is something that I've asked Joe and Jeff and staff to kind of look over and work on. And it's, it's what we're calling board policies. And it's not that it's gonna be put into the zoning bylaws or anything else, but it's gonna be policies of this board. And in particular, I think there's gonna be a need to have some policies or restrictions or callouts and things in certain neighborhoods, i.e. nab around the lakes, the villages, even other areas where people come to us on an undersized lot and they want to build a house. And I think that because of the nature of the town of Westford now and what people want in houses, we've got little lots, great big houses. And I think it's ruining the character of a lot of the neighborhoods. I know many years ago Lexington was having the same problem because there was a section called the manor section. It was all post-World War II capes and ranches that were built there, and people were buying them, tearing them down, and building McMansions there. So the town of Lexington put a building moratorium on them. Now, I don't think that's something that we're gonna do, but I would like to see everybody start thinking about what we can do about that. You know, one of the ideas that I had in, one of the last things that we looked at, I wish we had had the foundation for the proposed structure staked out so we could drive by and look at it and say, geez, that's big. Okay, what about this, what about that? Another thing that I had thought about is if you have an existing structure that's gonna be taken down or remodeled, I'm up with a percentage of how much can be added as a policy of this board, not as a bylaw. So can we, can you add 50% more, 30% more, 20% more, whatever the number is? And kind of make that a policy. The other thing I'd like to see happen is when people come to us on some of these undersized lots, have a minimum of at least three of the four setbacks have to be met. Because a lot of times they come to us and they're meeting two, maybe one, maybe they're not meeting any of them because it was an existing structure there. You know, the other, you can think about the height of a new structure versus what was existing. They're gonna be the same height, does it have to be within a certain percentage of the same height? Other things like raising the grade of a lot, can you make the lot way higher than it was there before? Some of it's gonna be predicated because of engineering and septic, but I just think it's gonna be one of those things. The other thing that I thought about is the number of bedrooms from an existing house to a new structure. Should that be kept the same, or should we have a policy saying, you know, we only allow one bed, more bedroom than was existing? So these are all just ideas that I've come up with. I want you all to start thinking about different things that you've thought about. And as I said, there's certain areas of town, and we've seen it already, especially around the lake, where, you know, they bought these small houses and made huge additions and built big houses. It's not that we're trying to stop it, but I just think that people coming to us, if they know that we have a policy that says, this board typically will only let you go 50%, well, I don't know what was there. Then I think they'll have a better idea when they show up here what to expect from this board. So anybody has any comments or questions? I see David's mind working over there.
No, I just, well, I was saying, do we? Do we know in the town of Westford how many two, three, four bedroom, five bedroom houses we have?
No.
Is that information? But we do have a, we, I don't recall the number, but we do have a sense of how many year-round dwelling units there are. We know that as of like 2020, it was, what, 9,237. But we don't have a sense of how many are one-bedroom, or two-bedroom, three-bedroom, or four-bedroom, but that could be something that the assessor could go through.
Well, I've, you know, I'm just trying to reflect. There's been some sentiment at times that people didn't want more bedrooms because it meant more kids for the school. And it meant to, proceed that as being kind of a burden on the town. And a lot of people have come here. But I think, I think Scott's on to something. Would it be, would it be nice to know? If you, first of all, the overall number, and then maybe if you had it by neighborhood or by, I don't know, cluster, I don't know how you refer to them as neighborhoods. It's probably not a bad, but you know, I mean, we had some discussion about a recent case where there was quite a large structure put on a property, and we had some discussion and not really any debate, but I think the applicant sort of maxed out. Not only, I guess, what they could do, what they wanted to do.
So I guess, just off the cuff, one of the things I would recommend is, first of all, we can gather some information about the dwellings, the types of dwellings, the number of bedroom count, et cetera. I would suggest that maybe the board not have this again as an agenda item until after one of your ongoing hearings closes and you issue a decision for that. But I have heard some thoughts from this board in the past about, so first of all, you already have a huge amount of discretion. You don't need a written policy to do some of the things that you talked about, like if you want to see the proposed structure staked out, you can already say, we want to see that staked out as part of our decision-making. And if we can't picture it, we don't have enough information to make an informed decision. But if you want to take it to the next step, you know, as far as like when people go and they look for the application, you know, materials, if you're looking towards having that staked out before you open your hearing so you can go and do a site visit and see, you know, that's something that would be good to clarify upfront. So that's one of the things you can look at. You can already require, and it would be a courtesy to say, hey, do this, otherwise you're wasting another month, you know, to stake it out and go see it and such. That's, that's all reasonable. You have, you're never obligated to grant any variance, okay? A lot of the situations that you're talking about for undersized lots or non-conforming structures, usually there's a special permit process involved. And you have a huge amount of discretion with special permits. Again, you're not obligated to grant it, and you have a lot more latitude with special permits than some other types of things. So I think, I think I get a little nervous when you say different neighborhoods. I think unless there's a different zoning district, like you've talked about in the past, like maybe it does make sense to look at some of the lake areas differently because I've heard this board say, sometimes the yards, it's kind of flopped, like people look at the front as the back, and the back and the front, you know, so maybe, maybe you don't think it makes as much sense to not be able to have like that accessory structure in a particular yard, maybe you think it's different, you know? It's also at odds with, you know, the resource areas and conservation, so, but I have heard this board say that, you know, before. And I know some other communities have looked at how they grant special permits differently, like maybe they look differently for the first, say it's a 15-foot side yard setback, they might look differently at the first five feet than they do going past that first third, you know, of the required setback. You know, so there are things that you can look at, we can try to get some examples from other communities. We're happy to do that. I would just advise, since you have an active petition before you, I would not have an agenda item on that until after that concludes and the appeal period is up.
Yep. Yeah, I just want to get the ball roll a little bit and get everybody thinking about this besides me. You guys should all stay awake at night and think of this stuff instead of me. Because I think that going forward, you know, as the town grows and there's less and less buildable land, you know, the teardowns are gonna start and it's just gonna be...
We've had a lot of them.
There's gonna be, yeah, there's a lot.
We already had a lot.
Yeah.
I, I think that a couple developments, the houses being 20 feet, only 20-foot distance in between them, it's almost like a cluster, cluster development. I think they have to be spread out of, and I can, I'm not gonna name a few, but you drive by them and it's like, they're too tight.
Oh, yeah? Yeah?
They're too tight.
The problem though, I think, on the other hand, you go to McMansions. I mean, that's exactly what happened when the planning board sued us on that property over on...
Yeah, I see, I see your point, yes.
So, so you could... You know, we talk about workforce housing, where essentially, when we, when we go to McMansions, we sort of, people get priced out of being able to buy a house. And that's one of the, I think that's one of the, I guess, if Westford is no different than the other town, but, you know, when somebody has a one-bedroom house, somebody grabs it and the next thing they do, they're trying to put on a couple other, a couple more bedrooms because they can't, that's the only thing they can buy into.
That's true.
You know, we had, well, I remember, well, rest his soul, Bob, we had this kind of a good discussion over at, what's that, that's the long sliver of land where they got, there's 17 or 19 houses there.
McDonald Reddith Road?
Yeah.
Juniper Hill?
Juniper Hill?
Juniper Hill, yeah. Remember, they got bonus, and the developers aren't dummies, they were trying to, they were trying to maximize the money they could make, and they really were, they were gonna get every damn house they could, and they wanted to make them as many bedrooms as they could. And I think we went back and forth. I think they didn't get as many three and four bedroom houses as they wanted, but they got, I think, they got more than some people wanted to give them.
There were, as I recall, restrictions on the number of bedrooms, and I think there were some restrictions on the number of bedrooms for the bonus units.
Well, they made the cut deal with Habitat for a couple of them so they could essentially deal off the one and two-bedroom ones where they could make as much money. I mean, it's not, there's not, I mean, they were just, they were being entrepreneurial.
Interesting, too, there hasn't been a lot of new construction like there used to be, right? So there was a lot of options for families, because a lot of families want to come to Westford because of the school system. So I think sometimes that's how they get, they get around it, they buy a smaller home and they add on to it to accommodate their families, you know? And that's a challenge, I don't know if we'll ever be able to completely stop, you know?
Well, it's not that we want to stop it, I just think as to Jeff's point, you know, with, with our variance criteria and our special permit and all these things that they've printed out for us, nice here, you know, the burden of proof is on them. It's not on us, it's on them to prove to us that what they're doing is not detrimental to the neighborhood and so on and so forth.
We gotta be more vigilant about our criteria.
I think you're right. I think, you know, these...
That's possible, but it's the first commandment, move on from that.
Yep, no, I agree. I agree, we're gonna get back to those and start using them more faithfully. So, but anyway, to get you guys thinking about it, that's what I'm trying to do.
If you have any other thoughts or suggestions, if you want to just email us directly without copying any of the board members, we can add that to some of the research efforts.
Okay. All right, if nobody has anything else, then the next item is correspondence. Jeffrey, your name's on this, what's this all about?
My name's on this?
Yeah, it says Jeffrey Morrison. Dear Jeffrey.
Yeah. Annual monitoring.
Oh, yeah. So what this is, for some of the affordable units, there's required monitoring that happens. So you may recall, you've received these in the past, for some units occasionally, they just check to make sure that things are abiding. When there's turnover, they make sure they're still meeting all the requirements. So and they're obligated to report, and so they, this is just one of those. We usually just put it in your correspondence. Sometimes the reporting agent changes. A lot of times it starts out as the Westford Housing Authority on behalf of the town sometimes, and sometimes a lot, it'll get transitioned to a different reporting agency based on the state, so.
Do we, so there was a resale of an affordable unit, right? Do we know what that sold for?
Well, we can find out what it's sold for, but what the, the certify and report is that it's within what's allowed, that it meets the requirements. Because trust me, you don't want these people checking that, you want our affordable housing consultant doing that, not us.
I agree with you, if it is always not great understanding on how that process works, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And it seems like sometimes ones that are affordable are no longer affordable down the road, you know?
So in, in rare, what I will say is, so for the units that are on our subsidized housing inventory, Westford is fortunate in that most of the units that are listed as on that inventory, most of them are there permanently, okay? There are some going way back where it wasn't in perpetuity, it was for a certain number of years, and they eventually expire. And some of those have come and gone since, I think two of them have happened since I've been here at least, but almost all of them are definitely permanent. There's been a few occasions also whereby there were foreclosures and such at some older ones where the, the regulatory agreement isn't consistent with the requirements of today, and there was a question brought about if, did the Affordable Housing Trust, did they want to continue that? And at times, there's actually a, there is actually a disadvantage to doing so. They, the cost to either buy down or take it up, they usually look at that on a case-by-case basis. cost to either buy down or take it up, they usually look at that on a case-by-case basis, and rare instances, they sometimes say, we got to let it go, it's not in the best interest of what we're using our, our funding for. I know it sounds contrary and it's convoluted a little, but-
We had one of those.
Yeah.
Over there off of, not across from Wood Pond Drive, those ones Bob Tierney did back in the day when no one knew what 40B was.
Yeah. Most of them are in very good shape in Westford, because we did look, because when we're, when we update our housing production plan, we look at the SHI, and that gets updated every year, we look to see what's scheduled to come off, you know, because it's aging out, so to speak, and there's only a handful of those that are not permanent left, and there's still quite a ways to go. And of course, we, as you know, we have a number of additional units coming onboard as well, and we're still above our 10%. We've got the Helena Crocker Residences, that's 18, 35 Town Farm Road, that's another 35, you know, that insulates us against, you know, a good number. And if the MBTA community passes, we do have the ability to require that 10% of the units be affordable and count on the SHI, so we're not in the worst of spots for that.
I was just asking, because I was just curious about what that initially sold for, and then now what is its, what's the difference in price, you know?
It is, it is a moving target.
Yeah.
Because they update what the area median income is every year, because it changes. So, and it's not a simple thing like what's happening in Westford, it's the region. So it does get updated, and it does change, and is allowed to go up, you know, sort of, it all depends, so it's outside of our control, but they just make sure that when it does, that it meets the then requirements for the level of affordability.
So it's an area median income and not a town?
That's correct.
So at least we stand a chance that way.
Well, actually-
Depends what towns are in the area.
That's right, so some people may say it's fortunate, unfortunate, so it may be, I mean, the prices in Westford are, you know, Westford's generally a more affluent community than most of the other communities in our regional bucket, right? So one of the issues is, the area median income, is you look at all, all of the communities in the greater Lowell area, right? So if you're living in Westford, right, you probably have to earn a certain amount more on average just to be able to live here, and so there's probably fewer people, or at least percentage-wise, that can qualify for, say, the 80% area meet, income in Westford than you can in some other communities, do you know what I mean? Because typically, they probably tend to earn more here in Westford just by virtue of them being here. Some people, you know, they inherited a home, there's always that, that situation, but if you just look at what people have to earn to just be and live in Westford, you know, you're kind of at a slight disadvantage almost for qualifying for the 80% AMI as compared to, you know, the same set of rules in other communities in the same bucket, so. And that's why we think workforce housing is not necessarily a bad thing to explore and pursue for Westford, because we think there's more opportunity for more Westford residents to be able to qualify for workforce housing. It's still a valuable niche and need, you know, that our community needs, and there hasn't been, you know, a lot, it's, mostly the effort has been for affordable housing. We haven't really been chipping away at the workforce, which goes up to 120% of the area median income. I'll stop talking.
Yeah, that's good.
But in that, in the workforce bucket, the only things I can think of that fall in that bucket are what Ellen's doing down at Boston Road and what she does over at Muffins on Me. Are there others?
I, in my time here, I don't recall any, well, so, I must speak, so there is, in your mill conversion bylaw, I believe, there's a requirement that 5% of the units be, I think at 80% AMI, another five at maybe 100% of the area. There, there was sort of a tiered thing, different levels, but that has only come up so many times, and in some of the mill conversions, even though they might be affordable in fact, or at 100% of the area median income, a lot of them didn't actually qualify on our subsidized housing inventory, even though there was that restriction. So, but by and large, I can't think of many, if any, projects since I've been here that came in as workforce housing.
What about the little ones across the street from where Ellen is, on Joe's way?
Nope, that's a typical 40B, 80%, I think 80% of the AMI. So, but it is something that I think is worth exploring.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comment? We will now actually close this meeting. Follows in favor?
Aye.
All right.